It looks really great, I mean better than before, way better than I anticipated.
The malt makes it, I think, like a thousand percent.
Yes.
Oh, the malt, oh yeah. But Sam's job, Sam's welding job is fantastic. And you saw the hole, did you see the repair?
I didn't see the repair.
Oh, the repair is good. The hole is, yeah.
That was not a good thing.
No, it was not good. Just happened to see it up here with the kids, we don't know what report or anything, but, so we got that fixed and Sam did it quickly too. So, it was up and running again, so just tighten a few things, maybe Daryl can help me out if I can, I can't see him, but, and do it again.
I'm not gonna fix it.
So that's all.
Okay. All right. Very good, thank you, Surya. All right, next up is a discussion of short-term rentals, and that's me. Okay, so, um, so let's talk a little bit about short-term rentals. So, one of the issues that is raging right now in the state of Texas, actually it's nationally, but Texas is right now hot and heavy, is this, is the Airbnb kind of short-term rentals? And, um, you know, we now, you know, we had an issue about six, eight months ago, somebody did it, and, um, the neighbors did, and we talked to the person, the person was very accommodating, didn't realize that it was a disruption, and they moved into the house.
Does anyone mind walking?
Yes. So that, that problem stopped. Unfortunately, on Peninsula, we have an issue where somebody bought a house, a wedding facility up and running, it's turned into now a rental bachelor pad, bachelor party, whatever it is, it's now turned into a short-term rental, nightly, two nights, it's not a monthly short-term rental, it's a daily, daily rental. And obviously, it is very disruptive, so the neighbors are upset, there's the usual suspects of problems, there's a lot of noise, there's parties, there's lots of people, there's parking, there's trash, it's a standard refrain that everybody's dealing with, is the short-term rentals when they rent them in a negative way. So, the question is, what, what's been going on? Well, there's been quite a bit of litigation. The issue basically hinges on how do you regulate how somebody rents their property? So, one approach has been to say that the, that when you rent it, you're paying the hotel tax, which you have to do for any less than thirty days, you have to pay a hotel tax, and we get tax revenue from that. So, the thought being that if you, if you look like a hotel, and you walk like a hotel, and you quack like a hotel, then you're a hotel, and that that is a business use. And so, cities were regulating that, that, um, we have residential zoning here, and hotels are not an allowable zoning, that's business, residential, that was the argument. It worked in the courts, it worked in the appeal court, the Supreme Court unanimously said, no. The Supreme Court of Texas overruled everybody and said, that is not a business use, that is residential. If you rent a home...
Even if you rent by the day.
Doesn't matter, what matters is, how are people using it? Supreme Court said, they're swimming in the pool, they're sleeping in the beds, those are residential activities, so it does not matter what the owner does. The owner can consider it a hotel, a bed and break, doesn't matter what the owner says, for purposes of what is it? So, the Supreme Court case was about an HOA, then in their deed restriction said, you can only use your house for residential uses. And they sued the guy who was leasing it, he did short-term rentals, couple days, weekends, all that, and they sued him, and went all the way to Supreme Court, and the HOA won every time till it got to the Supreme Court. And they unanimously ruled against the HOA and said, that is a residential use. The city of Austin doesn't allow you to have short-term rentals, that's on its way to Supreme Court, right now, a city. Other cities have tried to limit it. Grapevine, in October, said, starting October like fifteenth, they're going to not allow any short-term rentals anywhere in Grapevine. They didn't make it to the fifteenth. They lost in court by the twelfth. So, there was an injunction, and now they're banned, right now in court, there's an injunction, they're not allowed to enforce it. So, short-term rentals are a problem, and, and the biggest problem we have is as a general law city, what arrows do we have in our quilt? We don't have much, we're not a home rule city, so, and that's what's causing a lot of problems. The legislature has signaled, they're going to take it away from cities. The legislature tried last time, they're probably gonna do it this time, where they're gonna pass a ban, cities will not be allowed to enforce any ordinances against short-term rentals, just like the fracking ban in Devon. So, they tried it last time, it didn't work, but it got close. So, the Attorney General of Texas come out and said, absolutely positively, you're violating property rights if you take away short-term rentals. There was just a case in the last month, where a city said, you can't do short-term rentals, it went to court, and what the court ruled was, that was a takings. That person has rights to rent their property, by not allowing them to do that, you've taken away their rights. That's just like doing eminent domain, you've taken, you owe them money, you owe them compensation for taking away their rights to rent their property. So that's being litigated now, the court's already ruled, it was a takings. So, plain, the litigation environment is extremely risky right now. Right? So, that's kind of how it works. Now, are they a problem? Yes. Do they cause problems? Yes. Do we understand the problems? Yes. Do I want one? No. But, the issue is, what do we do? But that's the way to land. Again, we're, so for instance, what some cities have done is, they've said, you have to register, register so we can know who's doing it, and then maybe we can have rules that say, if, you know, if you're using your property as a short-term rental, you gotta have more parking, or something like that. We're a general law city, we have no authority to make you register. We have no authority to knock on your door and say, are you a renter, or are you a family owner? Our playbook is virtually empty, we can't make you do anything with your short-term rental. So, other home rule cities have registration schemes, like the city of Dallas does. City of Dallas says, all we want you to do is register. What do they do about it? Nothing. They just wanna make sure you're paying the taxes. They're a home rule city, they can make any rule they want, we're general law. So I had a lawyer talk to our attorney today, can we do, no, you don't have the authority. Could we do a safety inspection? No, you don't have the authority. Can we make them register us? No, you don't have the authority. So, that's, it's a problem every city's grappling with. So, what are we gonna do about it?
Sounds like nothing.
Well, here's what you can do.
Another way around.
The way I think that you can do this is, unfortunately, you know, if you could pass an ordinance like Grapevine, say, you can't rent your house for less than thirty days, game would be over, game's a match. Grapevine's litigating that right now, so is Austin, so is virtually most cities have done that. We'll find out, very soon, whether or not you can do that, it'll be yes or no, whether you can do it. In the meantime, what can you do? You could have nuisance ordinances, okay? Okay, so you can, you can enforce, if there's only trash in the yard, you could have littering, you can make them have more trash cans, you can, you can kind of, you have to attack it collaterally, and go at the, the side issues, and, and try to enforce that. We had great success doing this years ago. Clint will remember this, I don't know whether Ed was on the council or not, where we had people that kept parking their car, red houses, they would rent a house to like seven adults, seven adults would split the rent on a house in the shores, but the driveway is only one car wide, so they'd park in the front yard, they'd park on the back patio, they would park all over the lot, because they couldn't get on the driveway. Well, we have ordinances, you can't park in the yard, you have to park on an approved surface. They can't. So we changed the ordinance to say, it was illegal for the owner to allow that condition to happen. We brought the owner in, he wrote us a check for five hundred dollars. A week later, we brought the owner in, he wrote us a check for five hundred dollars. A week later, the owner evicted the people, and didn't rent it anymore to seven adults living in a three-bedroom house. So, that was very effective for us, when we had this problem. So, when it comes to public nuisances, we don't have, our nuisance ordinance covers tall weeds and grass, it covers burning construct, we don't, we don't have, our nuisance doesn't talk about lab noises, and parties, and, we don't have that in our ordinance. The reason why is because in 2007, our original nuisance ordinance said, in the ordinance, it was a violation to do anything unsightly. And our attorneys, after they got done laughing, said...
A little pain?
Yeah, a little, little tough to enforce that one. So, so we struck it, that's why there's sections that said, you know, it is a violation to, to allow your property to be in a manner which is offensive to the taste. What the hell does that mean? You know, is my stuck-up house offensive to Daryl, 'cause he bought brick? So we, we jettisoned all of that stuff.
I have a question real quick.
Yeah.
What were you on the nuisance? Is there a way to screen the renters, or no, we have no right to do any of it? So it could be a sex, it doesn't matter.
How do I make you tell me who's renting your house?
Okay, that sounds funny.
You know, I, again, part of our problems, like I asked you, Troy, I said, look, in your other cities, how do you know that it's being rented? Well, we saw it advertised, I said, okay, but how do you know that that's not his sister? That's not his sister, how do you, from a legal standpoint, know that that's a rental? You don't? Just 'cause it's not, just 'cause I'm not there, doesn't mean I rented it. So we're, we're stuck with that, with that legal standard, you know, we, we can't, now, you know, there's some issues like, and I'll just briefly touch on it, just to get it pointed out, in Austin, they have a limit as to how many adults are allowed in the house, six.
Yeah, is it based on square feet? I mean, is it very...
You're allowed to only have six adults in the yard at any given time. Six adults can assemble.
Oh, in the yard, not living in the yard.
Outside the house, six people. Which means, I couldn't have Christmas with my seven brothers and sisters out...
Oh my god, I can have my children over there.
Six people are allowed in the yard.
I like you.
No.
Now...
That's the city of Austin?
Yes, 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 red houses, I mean, short-term rentals.
Okay, oh, only on...
Red, only red houses.
Right.
Oh, right.
Maybe I can add to this conversation since I've been next to it.
The, and, yeah, so now, the, the issue then becomes, getting to Austin, is, under the United States Constitution, you have freedom of assembly. So that's why they're, they're getting crucified in the courts now, because you have to write, it's the First Amendment. Okay, so, back to where we're at, so what can we do? Okay, we don't, our nuisance ordinance doesn't cover, so barking dogs, dogs that keep you up all night, that's under animal control, that's why, how we prosecute that, okay, which we've done, we passed. Tall weeds and grass is the nuisance ordinance, which is probably headed toward the Property Maintenance Code. Okay? So, we don't have the noise ordinance, okay? So the next agenda item was, this is Frisco's noise ordinance. I took Frisco, I replaced the word Frisco with Lakewood Village, and then I deleted the sections that dealt with movie theaters, and, you know, Pizza Hut Park, and, that's why this draft, you'll see anywhere, is, you know, you've got section one, and four, and eight, and six, and, and it's not in your, you know, in kind of your standard format. Where is it? Is that the top? Sorry. That's nuisances. Okay, so you can see, so this ordinance talks about, you know, what I wanted is, I wanted to get the, the verbiage right. I'm not trying to, you know, like, how do you write an ordinance that says, if you, if you're loud, if you're too loud, it becomes a violation, right? How do you write that? Well, it's easy, just go to Frisco, whatever they wrote. So that's what I did.
They did all the research, right?
Yeah, so, you know, no person shall loudly make a cross made any unreasonably loud disturbing noise in Lakewood Village, which is offensive to the sense of noise of a reasonable prudent adult person, renders the enjoyment of life or property uncomfortable, interferes with the public peace and comfort, or causes a noise disturbance as defined herein. Now they define noise disturbances, whether they're car radios, or bands, or, you know, whatever, but this is verbatim from Frisco. Okay? So, you can read through this, my goal of putting this here, is to let everybody see that, the next step for this, is to make this, is to give to Andy, have Andy add the section which makes the homeowner...
I didn't see that part.
...liable, whatever that correct verbiage has to be, to make it transfer to the owner. Okay, so that, but this is pre-dat Frisco, and, you know, according to our controls, ordinance, which we passed a while back, right, before I send any prospective ordinance to Andy, the goal is to discuss it, right, that's what we, that's what we agreed to, any prospective ordinance to be discussed. So that's why this is here, and, um, this is the recommended solution right now, what Andy is advising his cities, is to, this is the, the, a good first attempt, is, is start with this, this is the easiest thing to implement, and we are absolutely bulletproof, cities have nuisance ordinances, there's absolutely no question that, that, that we have the rights to do this as a general law city, they can't argue that.
This has come up before too, not, not to the degree that it's coming up now, but it's, it's come up before, and we've had no mechanism, so this is kind of a long overdue that we need a...
I think it's gonna keep coming, I think it's gonna keep coming more and more, we live in a lake town, and Airbnb now is popular, so I think it's just gonna keep happening more and more. So it's important.
Yeah, it's a good idea, for sure.
Yeah, so, and, and I think that there are, well, this is a good first step, is, is, and, you know, I, I talk with Andy, I'm gonna talk to the renters again, face to face, give them a fair warning that this, this is a new ordinance that we're passing...
The renter for the homeowner.
I'm sorry, the owner, the owner, and, and explain that, you know, look, this, this is, this doesn't, this ordinance, if you looked at it, this noise ordinance applies C1.
Right.
Which is what it needs to be, this is not targeting...
Just renters.
Just rent, this is, this is, so, it's anybody, it's ad going wild on New Year's Eve, and, you know...
Well, we all have that, yeah.
The, the other thing that, that our attorney suggested we do, and, and I think, I think this makes a lot of sense, what some cities have done, and I think it's good to do, is, they created a form, which is a complaint form for violating, you know, the excessive noise, and they've taken that form, and they put it on the front page in their website, and it's, so you can hit that in, you know, one second, you, it's real easy to let everybody go to fill out that form. And, that's what other cities are doing, just to make it so, man, you can, the, the other advantage of doing this, doing it through this, is that, let's say that, let's say there's a red house next to Ed, or a short-term rental next to Ed, and we cite them five times for this. Ed then has the ability, because those are violations, Ed on his own can file his own civil suit, because they're disrupting, making his life happen. And the evidence is, the fact that we cited them five times, now becomes the evidence that Ed can now use in his civil suit. And just knowing that Ed can file civil suit, again, ups the ante, to, to, the downside risk becomes now pretty large, to, to doing this, and I think that's kind of, that's just another thing. So Kevin, I know, so let me explain, Kevin is next door to this issue, Kevin is obviously, you know, invested in this, we know, I know all the issues, but...
I, I think it's worthwhile, yeah, absolutely, I have a dog and a son, so I'm not disguising that, but, I think it's worthwhile to share, not only my observation, Brent, my neighbor, Mike, and, you know, I know Brian Scott, and he's not a bad guy, I've met him a couple of times, that's the guy that bought the house. The things that the council needs to be aware of, is that, and I'm just gonna, when you have an Airbnb, it changes every weekend, sometimes the renters are courteous, and it's not a problem. There are a number of times, and I've seen, Mark, officially, there's nine vehicles in the driveway, and it's, and they have a bachelor's apartment, the problem is that there are a lot of alcohol, and they go in and out, I don't track them, 'cause it's just when I have them walk out of my house. A lot of people walk on roads near my house. We have people that are intoxicated, so I can't prove it, and I haven't stalked any of them, but when they burn rubber and leave, that's generally an indication. I have a lot of neighbors that walk kids, these people are leaving at different times, they're not just leaving at midnight, they're leaving at six or seven, eight in the evening, and it's a party. If you read the website, go look at the website, you look under house rules, it is a designated party location, and they allow twenty people, it's, it's a party site. Now, Mark has articulated the legal position, which I don't always agree with, by the way, I do train lawyers, it's part of the living, but I think that his assessment of the legal landscape is pretty accurate, to be honest with you. Oh, hey, I have to tell you one thing, I wish my wife was here, I have to digress for a moment, if I just went into diligence and selling my business in Chicago, if I had a report that was like this on, I would've been the happiest clown in town, I am not kidding. That may or may not pass by you, but it is so difficult to get through to these audits with that kind of result, at least in my businesses, so, anyway, into the whatever it's worth column, all I can tell you is, my wife's a CPA, she'd be like, in fact, it would've been a standing ovation, because we've been through this, and like I said, it's probably more at the surface for me, 'cause I just went through it myself, and it's just accepted, didn't have proof of your results, you did. Anyway, back to my pitch, pardon my expression. So, you know, one of my concerns is, and maybe we need to put speed bumps, maybe we need to start taking, we need to take a look at the issue beyond the loud. There's a real safety issue that we're engaged with, and, and the reason is, is that you don't know where the weak ones are, there's no background checks, they're not neighbors, Brett can't, when he goes hunting, he can't leave his guns in the, in the back of his truck, he, he won't know if they're gonna be there. So, it, it creates, and, and we're talking about somebody that, that bought the house that had over a hundred, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand cash, it's not like he can't work out things, he just doesn't have a lot of respect for whatever Lakewood Village is. So, when you noodle about this, and this is the reason I spoke to Mark about it, is, I looked at it, and there's three elements from my perspective. First is, I travel in security for my wife, so I've had to buy cameras, update security, that's, that's good, and that's on my part, I would never have done that a month ago, or two months ago. So, that's a person, and there are other people in my neighborhood that have similar dynamics. That's, first issue for me is security, and that's, that's just, and, and I can think of the arguments on the other side, you know, I could have neighbors that are semi-criminals anywhere, I mean, I, I could have that issue, I know how the Supreme Court looked at it, they, they could go, hey, that could, that issue could happen anywhere. Well, right, but it's just a lot higher likely in my circumstances. So security is my first concern. My second concern...
Let's wrap it up, I mean, we had a chance, we had a chance for public comments, and you...
All right, all right, point taken. So my second concern is what Mark addressed, and it's, it's loud and uncomfortable, I hope you look favorably upon the motion, and then, like I said, the, I love the, you know, the issue we deal off of, it's lights, and you already addressed that issue, that's my only comment for y'all.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
And, just so everyone, I mean, Kevin and I have been talking about this since this thing's happened, and we've talked a lot about it, and it's frustrating for everybody right now.
Can we get to...
Nobody likes having our citizens in distress.
Can we get some help from the Dent County sheriffs?
No. I mean, it is, you know, it's very, as I've said before, we have few quills, a few arrows, we just, it's very frustrating, so...
As, mine's the point of view on this, I think this is one that's long overdue, I like the strategy of, let's do the noise ordinance, and then that still gives us character, and then we can clean up our, detangle our nuisance on our property maintenance, and eventually work towards kind of consolidation here, but I think if we make an immediate to ways ordinance...
Yep.
So I, I think that's a good move, that's something we can do.
Okay. Does anybody have any, any edits to make before I forward to Andy?
No, I just wanted to kind of have a comment. So, I think this is good, but, what, what if in the event, neighbors don't get along, and just to spite the other neighbor, they come and they fill out a nuisance or noise ordinance? I mean, how, who is going, is, are we gonna take them by their word, that it's actually happening?
It's...
It's tough, that same condition could exist today, we have a general complaint form that, that can happen now, so I mean, it's...
I mean, I can tell you, Liz, that the way we operationalize here in the office, is that, if you came in and said, you know, the guy next door to his, the barking dog, was up all night or whatever, and you filled out a complaint form, we call them on the phone, there's no violation, there's no, you know, come to court, there's no, we, we try to talk to you on the phone, and say, like, here's the problem, your neighbors, be a good guy, you know, make the problem go away. Usually it takes about three tries. By the third time, then you're getting the lettuce as well. We, we've really tried to be, well, we use common sense, you, sometimes, I, I, it has happened very often, somebody will do a complaint at the heat of the moment, by the time I talk to them, they realize, like, you know, yeah, I was...
A little bit, yeah.
And, and that's why we don't have code enforcement officers, 'cause code enforcement officers have no, they write tickets, that's their job. So I, I don't think that would be, I just, 'cause we use kind of common sense, you know...
I think there would be a little different action though, though, if, if all the surrounding neighbors filed the same complaint on the same night, same time, then that's...
That's what I'm saying, if it's, if it's coordinated, then yes, but if it's isolated, then we have to really think about, is it happening?
Yeah, I mean, but most times, it's, it's not a continual, you know...
What Mark, what Mark described is those are the little moments that Linda doesn't get paid enough, 'cause she can just call and have that, have that conversation, where me, I would, I couldn't have, she has amazing patience to have that conversation with me.
Now, I, I will tell you that, I know for a fact, that for instance, if you, if you were to call Dent County, call sheriff, 'cause your neighbor's rocking out, the county does have a nuisance, they do have a, 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 a noise ordinance, the county does, but it's something like, and I, I forget the exact number, it's something like a hundred feet away, it's gotta be like eighty decibels.
They have to witness it, they have to listen to it when it come up.
But, so, 'cause they have said, to me, I've talked to them, and they've said, look, if you got a problem, call us, we'll definitely come out, 'cause we don't want you going over there and getting in a fistfight, because the person, you know, won't turn it down, we'll come. But if you think we're gonna end up writing them a citation, that's like a one in a billion chance, because just 'cause you can hear it in your house with your windows, doesn't mean it's, it has to be so loud that you can't function, that's the way, 'cause they don't, they're not gonna write tickets on that. But there is, so if there was some, you can call the sheriff, and they will come out. So there is a method rather than us, but...
Well, like you said, like they're, they're drinking... Well, like you said, like they're, they're drinking and driving and all of that, I would think that...
So, I talked to the sheriff about, maybe a year ago, I said, "Look, suppose there's an event, a wedding, and they're drunk on their ass and they come out and start driving down the road. Can you go out there and wait out there to stop people that are leaving this thing that are potentially drunk?" And they said, "We can't pull anybody over unless they do something." So, unless they weave or, you know, so that's the problem, so if...
Till the damage is done.
If they're drunk and they leave that red house and they're in their car and they drive down the street, we, the sheriff can't just pull them over. Because he thinks they're, he can't do it.
No, but they're radically driving, sir.
That's right, that's right.
They have to meet the problem.
Yeah, but it's one of those things that you can set up, those stops. We used to have them around our college, uh, anyone can go by this, what's it called? Yeah.
Subaru.
I mean, they technically could do that, the way, I mean, they're not doing that here, I guess, though.
But I mean, but again, that's part of frustration. Okay, um...
So, I think operationally Liz, if it's one, then it's, it starts the competition. If it's, if it's a group of people, then it's kind of, it'll kind of...
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move down to Andy then, and I'll meet with Andy and we'll take it, take the next step. I'll bring that to you next morning.
We have two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
How long has this issue existed?
Three months?
Not more than that.
At your place?
Yeah. Three, maybe three months.
I, I, then I just started renting.
And where is the house?
At the end of this.
In England.
You had the Hyrich House to report this, right?
The Hyrich House was a one and done. Okay, uh, next up, we have discussion of water and sewer line improvements. All right, so this is, um, uh, again, some of the plumbing work before we get to the roads. I, uh, so I had a meeting with the, uh, the fire chief. Okay, so one of the things that we have to do before we can get the roads down is we have to make, uh, water and sewer changes prior to the roads going in. So, uh, one of our problems that we have is every single cul-de-sac in the town that, in this side of town are all constructed improperly. None of them are the correct size. And so, in order to make them the correct size, we, some of them, the one on Mellow Lake, we have to go about 50 feet into the yards. We have to take out mature trees. We can't do that. Every cul-de-sac is too small. So, the, uh, the Kerry Court cul-de-sac is about 72 feet across. Daryl can't imagine it with me. Um, cul-de-sacs are 100 feet to allow a fire to try, that's fire code. 100-foot diameter, most of ours are neighboring about 75 feet. Which means you'd have to go anywhere from 12 to 15 feet into the grass, take out not much more of their driveways in order to make the cul-de-sacs. We could do that, but I talked to the fire chief to find out, what's our options? What, what can we do instead?